Good evening. Today is May 22nd and it is 6:03. And this is the Groton Board of Education and it is our regular meeting. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Kate, as your last work with us, would you be willing to lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So our second order is participation and recognition of visitors, and I believe that there is none coming to us today. Thank you. And the next portion is our citizens' comments. And this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. Do I have anyone in the room that would like to comment? Is there anyone online? Ms. Joan, did you, is there anyone in the chat or anyone?
No, there is not.
Thank you. It's good to hear your voice. I think I asked that just so I can hear your voice. A little selfish that way. All right, hearing none, we are going to go down to the student representative report. I do know that we have Isaiah online, but we also have Kate here, our two seniors. Isaiah, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. I don't have too many things to talk about today, but for our spring sports at Fitch, we're starting our ECC tournaments. Baseball has a game against Plainfield away tomorrow. I know, actually, I think tennis had a couple matches today. And in addition to that, we have our senior prom coming up on June 2nd and our senior trip on June 5th.
Wow. It's getting pretty close, huh?
Yeah, pretty much at the finish line right now.
Ten days?
Around there, I think.
Wow, that's a good question. That's amazing. Yes. Isaiah, where are you going to school?
Hi, Dr. Ackerman. I am going to University of North Carolina Chapel Hill.
Whoa.
And Kate?
Hi, I'm Kate Sibashi, and I just have a few things to present on. This past Tuesday and Thursday, we had the pops concert at Fitch for the music department. So I was only at the Tuesday concert. That was for the choir. And then the Thursday concert was for orchestra and band, and those went off without a hitch. They were fantastic. There were so many wonderful performances that I was so happy to be able to be a part of. As well as tomorrow, there is the National Honor Society Ceremony for the inductees, which I have the privilege of speaking at, and Dr. Piazza will also be there as well. So that'll be really exciting. I have a lot of friends stepping into that role, so that's something I'm really excited about for them. We also have the Senior Awards Night coming up on the 30th, which I personally am very excited for. I've worked very, very hard. So to be recognized for things like that, I think is just another reason to put in so much hard work and dedication, which is something I've put into my speech for tomorrow. The music department, for the choir at least, is also doing a song at the end of the month with the middle school at their pops concert. So we've been working on Lean on Me, which I'm really excited to get to share with the middle schoolers, you know, all the joy that being in a high school choir brings. And then my final two things, Drama Club just had two very successful productions, The Little Shop of Horrors, not this past weekend, but the one before. And M4 also just had an open mic night on Friday that went really well. There was a lot of poetry I heard that many students presented. So, thank you.
Andrea, did you want to ask the same question today? Okay. Where are you going to school?
I'm going to Gordon College. What a mess.
Woo. Gordon. And I forgot to ask Isaiah what he was going to study. I should know that, but I don't. So maybe if he'll answer, then you can answer. Isaiah, what are you going to study?
I'm going to study political science and then hopefully go to law school after.
With the intent of becoming what?
A lawyer.
Don't do it.
No, no, no. That's not what I heard at the dinner. What was the intent?
What'd you say?
I said, "That's not what I heard at the dinner." What's your ultimate?
So, the intent of being a lawyer and then one day become the President of the United States of America.
There you go. So Kate, what are you going to study?
I'm going to double major in accounting and finance.
Whoa.
I like numbers.
I do, too.
Educational accounting and educational finance.
Hopefully in business. Sorry.
For profit.
But both to Kate and to Isaiah, to do the board during the pandemic and as we come out, the joy that you bring us, the insights that you have brought the board, you've made us go from a good board to a great board. So the two of you, thank you very much for your work and leadership in helping us adults be the best adulting, or do the best adulting that we can for the Board of Education. So once again, thank you very much for Kate and Isaiah for your leadership with us. Thank you.
Might I add to that? I think you have all prepared the two of us to do the best adulting that we can do as we go off into college. So thank you to you all.
Yeah, you have a lot of people on that are watching you and seeing you and holding you as you go through your next phase of your journey, and we are looking forward to hearing all the great stuff from the two of you.
Thank you.
Got it. Right, but I am going to move us along. Enough of that touchy feely stuff. And so we're going to go on to the superintendent and administrative reports. And so Superintendent Austin?
So I would like to really share with you the good information that we have on our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and the work that's been done this year. I see Jamal Davis is with us virtually because I think he has a daughter who's participating in that competition. And we also have Lori Lapine and Dr. Piazza, who have also helped spearhead this initiative. The goal, I think, this year was really to move it from a district-wide committee to having schools have on, in their schools, committees and committee work. And we've done everything from book talks to making sure we have equal opportunity schools in our high school, looking at those high-level classes. So there have been numerous initiatives that have happened this year. So I'm going to turn it over to them to give you some more details.
Jamal, I'm going to let you go first. I don't know what your timetable is, so why don't you share with us what you want to share with the board?
Well, thank you. Again, I want to thank, thank you for understanding. My daughter's running her track meet. Very excited dad. She just won the 400 as a sophomore, so she is an ECC champion. Very exciting. But with regards to DEI and the work that we're doing, I'm excited to share with you that this year, as Susan was stating, that we really wanted to be intentional in moving the work from being more top-centered to more within the schools themselves. So our focus was building the capacity and readiness of members within the school so they can take that work within their school with an equity focus. And so we were able to send a number of our students to the RISK Alliance, Niting Change Pathways. We sent members to inclusive schools, and we also sent members to equity-centered leadership. And our goal, with each of those, let me just explain a little bit, with each of those, there were five meetings that they attended. These were attended in Hartford as well as in Hampden. And what we're hoping that we get from those experiences is that they can come back and share what they learned at those particular professional developments. So for example, in inclusive school culture, they were focusing on foundation of equity in education, developing an equity lens, examining policies and practice in the physical environment through an equity lens, coaching children, adults for an inclusive school culture. And then they end, in fact, I'll be there tomorrow to see the work that they've done with an action plan. With the equity-focused organizational leadership, the focus was defining your equity senior, central leadership, facilitating equity-centered conversations, and focusing on looking at data, using data to inform decision-making, and then again, ending with some action planning. So what I really like about it is now we're building capacity beyond that of, again, as I mentioned, for those individuals in terms of a district but within the schools. Because then we have transitioned into creating equity leadership at each school with the goal of setting one priority that they can focus on. So again, individualize it to that specific school, providing them both the skills, the knowledge, and the will to do that work. So that's where we are. I'm now going to pass it back to Dr. Piazza because he's going to talk about how cultural responsive teaching has been integrated into the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Jamal. In a lot of what I said, I've mentioned before in previous meetings, we've tried to do a lot of work with cultural responsive teaching in the classrooms. Again, as Jamal was saying, building the capacity within our teachers to have difficult conversations and to lead the work within their own building. I've mentioned these names before to you, Dr. Cherry Paul, Dr. Sonya Cherry Paul, Cornelius Minor, I know you've heard that name over the years often, and Dr. Kim Parker. They've all worked in our schools at the various levels to help build, again, this capacity within our teachers to make decisions about curriculum and about instruction that help provide a better environment for our teachers. So what we've, what I'll talk to you more about tonight is sort of how, you know, moving forward, we've started making decisions as to how we're going to continue this work moving forward. I'm happy to say that, you know, we've worked, again, with Cornelius Minor over the years, and we're going to continue to work with him, both at the middle and high school level. So we've met with him and discussed how we're, what that's going to look like next year. And we'll have both in-service days where he is, I mean, in-district days, where he is here working with our teachers in classrooms, modeling as well as giving feedback to our teachers, and also virtually, where he comes in and meets with administration and various teacher groups virtually through Zoom, where they can exchange ideas about culturally responsive teaching. So that work is going to continue.
Can I give them a specific example? So Cornelius Minor was working with the middle school, with ELA teachers, but also with social studies teachers, helping them really understand their need to be teachers of reading and writing, and showing them ways that they could help their students access difficult texts, difficult vocabulary. And when the other teachers started catching wind, the high school really wanted to have that happen, so he came back with all of our high school and middle school social studies and ELA teachers. Then our science folks said, "Well, we have difficult texts, too, and we do a lot of research and development, and we are teachers of writing as well." And the math teacher said, "Our language looks a little different, but it is a language." So they've really all been so inspired to have him, and he's just such an inspirational and he gives them such really concrete tips of ways to, you know, put the vocabulary down, make those connections in history, and really help kids to access difficult text. And while we do differentiate with text, and there's so much out there online, he's able to really give them ways that they can make sure that their kids are reading and writing in their discipline and across the discipline. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, no, that's good. There's so many levels to his work, and he has been, it's really been impressive. And I think I've mentioned this before, too, all three of these educators who we've brought into the district has had a positive effect, and the responses that we're getting from surveys from people is like, when are we going to be able to continue the work? As we talked about during budget season, you know, this, you know, a lot of the decisions we make have to, you know, we always keep our budget in mind. And the question about building our capacity came up, and, you know, I'm happy to report, even with the work with Dr. Kim Parker, who worked with our high school English department, about reviewing our curriculum, looking at the texts that we teach, had a really profound impact on our English department. And Amy McKenna is going to continue that work with our middle school next year and use what they learned to now go down into our middle school and do that work there as well. Dr. Sonya Cherry Paul finished up her year with us last week. She visited CK as well as Mystic River. I was able to get down to Mystic River and sit in on a few of her sessions. And again, I'm happy to report, we're trying to finalize bringing her back next year to work with us on the Election Day, PD Day, to, you know, probably give keynotes at different levels and then run some small group workshops, as well as continue her work with the administration. Again, one thing that's been important to her is not just to work with the teachers. She insists, as part of her work, to work with the administrative council or administrative team. So we hope to continue that next year as well, as we try to strengthen, you know, continue to strengthen our DEI teams on the building level. So that work will continue in some capacities with these individuals, others, you know, we're going to move forward with the skills that we've learned from them to now sort of expand their work into the various levels of the school. So it's been impressive to see the work that's been accomplished. This isn't, again, this isn't the type of work that you just sort of check the box and say it's done. It's continually ongoing. And I think you'll see that as we move forward and as, next year, as you continue to hear about the curriculum that's being written, the books that are being taught, I think you'll see the effects of the work that these people have had on us and the work of the teachers moving forward. So we're happy about that, and we're happy to continue, continue the work. As Jamal was stating, I'll let Lori share a little bit about her work, but I also wanted to mention, too, that hopefully we're going to be looking soon, Susan and I are planning our end-of-year meetings with our principals, and part of that meeting is reviewing the survey data that, you know, we end up sharing with the board as well. We have questions in there, if you remember from last year, about how people feel, and this is, these are given to the students, the parents, and the staff, their feelings on how the staff appreciate student diversity and respect for each other. We ask our teachers if they're comfortable having conversations with colleagues about diversity, equity, inclusion. We ask them how often students are given opportunities to learn about people from different races, ethnicities, and cultures. So these, you know, we're hoping to see improvements in these areas. I think we identified some areas that we wanted to work on after last year, and so we're going to compare that data over the last three years, hopefully, since we've been doing these surveys, and really work with the principals on looking at that data, seeing what it says, and then developing goals from there as to what we want to accomplish next year. And then eventually, as you know, we share that data with you and review that with you. So those surveys close soon, and then again, those are the focus, part of the focus of our conversations with principals at the end of the year. I'll let Lori share anything on our hiring committee?
Yeah, so I'd like to give the board just a brief update on the Recruitment Hiring Retention Committee. It's a subcommittee to the Districtwide DEI Committee. We spent the last couple of years, two to three years, with a heavy focus on recruiting and hiring. We've done a significant amount of work in that, in that area. I know the subcommittee's reported out to you at times, but just to refresh memories, we spent a lot of time focusing on minority educator recruitment, working with historically black college universities, diversity career events, developing the Grow Our Own programs for our non-certified staff members to assist them in becoming certified teachers, working with the Teacher in Residence Program, which is actually kind of a statewide initiative that we signed on to a few years back to bring educators of color into the profession and give them a path to teaching. And then working with the high school on career pathway scholarships for our students. We originally received a grant for that. We continue to support those students as well, who are moving on to teaching pathways and working on their educational preparation programs. So we continue to kind of work on all of those recruitment avenues as we move forward, and we're committed to those programs going forward as well. And then we've also done a major realignment of our hiring process, our interview materials, so that they align to our mission around diversity, equity, inclusion. So we ask specific questions that have been developed by the committee. So all of that has been fully embedded into our process this year. We piloted it two years prior, and then we've completely embedded it this year. So we're now working with the new materials, which is great. And then the focus for moving forward 2023 will be to focus on retention. So the committee is shifting its focus. We've done a significant amount of work, like I said, with recruiting and hiring practices. Now we'll shift our focus going forward to look at retention initiatives, surveying, and so forth.
One other thing I just wanted to mention is that part of the work that we were doing with Sonya Cherry Paul was with the classroom walkthroughs. And as we are moving forward, looking at our teacher evaluation program and developing our policies around that, we are going to incorporate a lot of what, a lot of the resources that Dr. Cherry Paul gave to us, and what to look for in classrooms that are culturally responsive. And I think everyone that's taken part in it will agree, a lot of it is just good teaching. A lot of it is just build, you know, how you build relationships with your kids in the classroom. So it's nothing new. It's nothing our teachers aren't doing, but it just gives our administrators something to look for while they're walking through, and we're going to incorporate a lot of that into our program that, again, we'll share with you as it's developed.
Lori, could you please tell me how many teachers are retiring and if we have any new hires already? And also, you know, is it a diverse hiring of new staff?
Sure. So we had, last, last count, we had 15 retirees. We're in the process of hiring now. We've made a small number of hires, but I'd be happy to put that information together for you once the hires are made. We can identify that information for you.
We have been able to place every single one of our teachers in residence.
Oh, really?
Who have been diverse candidates. So we've had positions that have opened up due to retirements that we've been able to place. So that's a real good. And I think there are at least two every year for three years or something like that.
Yeah, we actually had three placed last year and then one this year, so four over two years. And our teacher in residence, we just informed him that he would be going to Thames River, so he's very excited to get started there next year.
Could you just explain for the public what that means, teacher in residence?
Sure. So the Teacher in Residence Program is a program in which they spend an entire year, school year, with a mentor teacher in our district. They learn, they go, they do their coursework, they do classroom, in-classroom teaching practice, and basically develop their teaching skills over the course of a year, and then they are then released to be placed in their own assignment in year two, which is the individual I just mentioned, he'll be going to, will be going to Thames River. And in the second year, they are followed again by a sponsor teacher to continue to help them grow and develop. So it's really a two-year program, but they, they work with, as a co-teacher, year one, they have their own classroom year two.
It's almost like a two-year internship with student teaching included.
Are these individuals have bachelor's degrees, and then they're going on for their education, teaching degrees, right?
Correct, correct.
So they do end up with a master's?
Over time, yes, yes. But they move from a bachelor's to certification. That's the program. Yeah, educator preparation to certification. Yep, yes.
And do we reimburse them for their courses, correct?
It's actually, we pay the program costs, so it doesn't cost anything of the individual to take the program, which is, it's a, it's a program designed to eliminate financial barrier for the student themselves.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
Yes, it's a great program.
And our mentor teachers also get a nice stipend as well.
They do, that's correct.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Dee?
I shouldn't, but I will. Any efforts to recruit Asian teachers? What, and first of all, what percentage of our student population, on the whole, would you, would qualify as Asian-American or Asian?
I wouldn't know the student number. I don't, I don't ring a bell, not off the top of my head. I don't know the student number. But specifically, our goal is to diversify our entire workforce, no matter what it is. So we don't target specific educators of color. It's just being sure that we're finding individuals who mirror our student population.
And who are highly qualified.
Yes, correct.
Okay. But the goal is, at some point in the future, to have the faculty exactly, or as closely as possible, match the demographic makeup of the students according to categories set by the state, right?
Yeah, I mean, the goal is certainly to have our workforce mirror our student population demographics, yes.
I for one, don't confuse somebody of Korean background with somebody from Indian background, but they're both counted as Asian by the state. There's no differentiation made. I don't know whether we're going to actually take the additional step to make sure that if we have an Asian portion of our faculty, actually consider the actually widely disparate subgroups, but I don't know.
So your issue is more about the subgrouping by state and federal government?
Oh, I don't have an issue at all. I'm just sort of curious.
Okay.
Andrea? This isn't really a question. It's more of a confession. I'm on the DEI, but somehow, in the last two meetings, I haven't been able to connect. I guess I didn't, what I'm saying is I didn't get the notification in time, and I'm taking responsibility for that because I didn't look in the right place. But I want to, I just want to assure everybody that I want to continue and that the board, from my perspective anyway, has your entire support.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea, and I'll be sure to touch base with the committee leader to make sure that they know that. Yeah, thank you.
So the reason why this is on our agenda is, is that, if you can remember, about a month and a half ago, or maybe the end of March, Susan and Joyce from the superintendent's office and I met to clean up our template and our referral sheet, and this was on a template, and so it's not that we're only going to talk about DEI once a year, but we wanted to make sure that once, at least once a year, there's a, that the board gets updated on the activities of the district to ensure that. And so that is in May, it just happened to be on the template. So Susan and I are trying really hard to kind of follow through on that stuff.
And it also was timely, I think I brought to the board's attention, that Juneteenth, June 19th, is a federal holiday now, and it's also recognized by the state. And in our own town and city, it's been recognized and is being observed. Last year, I think the board asked me to get a proclamation, and we actually had school late that year so that we were able to say that it was, you know, a recognized holiday. I know that the, a lot of banks are closed and a lot of state and workers are, you know, have the day, and that our city and town also is giving the day. So the question was asked, what kind of financial responsibility would the board bear? So I brought it to our Finance Facilities Group, to, you know, Board of Ed Committee, to really look at it and examine it. And with Ken's help, we asked the question, well, what is this going to cost the board? So Ken, if you want to just remind, I think we also had a nifty chart that you did up.
And Jay, also, if you would like to, as the Chair of the Finance and Facilities, if you would like to also chime in, because I know that you guys talked about it.
I think Ken has his chart, so I'll defer to him.
Oh, so we, we had identified that with it being after-school, that's out this year, that the impact was for, I think we came up with 88 employees, that central office and the maintenance and custodian technician group. The, the financial impact, it isn't so much of an impact because the, those groups would be paid for that day regardless of whether or not they, they were, they were at work. So there, we found no financial impact, just So there, we found no financial impact, just productivity impact, because of course, if they weren't there, they wouldn't be doing the duties of that, those positions.
And we also discussed that an MOU would have to go into place, because it does affect some union workers. So we would have to really craft and get Floyd's help on that. The question was also asked, well, what if school was in session? And if we got, you know, some snow, and, you know, we always plan to finish up the year. It seems like we've had graduation the 16th, 17th for the past several years. But if it went past that, what would that look like? And we did say we would probably have to adjust the calendar accordingly if there was snow. And, you know, and then the kids would also have the day off, but they really wouldn't be given the day off, it just, or the teachers wouldn't be given the day off. They'd just have that day, then the following day, and we'd continue on the calendar.
Yeah, the teacher contract number of days will stay the same, they just wouldn't potentially work on that June 19th day.
Jay, I saw that your hand was raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, but, but Ken sort of made my point. The, the classroom teachers and the administrators all are contracted to work a certain number of days per year, and that's what they're paid on. So if there's a federal holiday, it, it doesn't impact us. It just means they work another day. And so there's no financial impact, except, I think we brought up the scenario that if there were some sort of building emergency, that staff, you know, would be brought in on holiday pay. But other than that, the, the employees who are not under a contract that specifies the number of days that they work, would have the day off. And as Ken mentioned, it's sort of a, it's a productivity thing, but it doesn't directly increase any of the line items in salaries.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So, when you said that, you know, they would work, when would be the other day that they would make up that day? You said that they would make up the day.
During, during a school year, you mean?
Yeah.
If, if school went past June 19th, then the June, June 20 would be the next day.
Okay. And what about the cost for paraprofessionals and part-time employees that don't work 12 months?
The same would be true for them. They would have to work then the following day. So they also have contracted days of the year. So that would just, you know, offset the year.
But there, there would be a cost to that, because they're not normally 12-month employees.
Paraprofessionals and tutors? Correct, they're not 12-month employees, and, but there wouldn't be an additional cost, because we wouldn't pay for the day that they didn't attend school. It would be the following day when they did come in.
So they would come to work an additional day of the school year, based on a calendar, if we had to adjust it for weather, like we've had to do in the past. And sometimes we hold off on that graduation, as you know, sometimes it feels like too long. We're waiting to make that graduation date. And then, you know, and then there's, you know, weather inclement. Like this year, we were really pretty fortunate. We're ending on the 14th for everybody, and we're having our graduation on the 16th. So we had a really good year as far as weather goes. Didn't we, Sam? They still worked very hard, because our custodial crew, maintenance crew, are the people who are out there at four o'clock in the morning, on those snow days, ice days, you know, doing that extra care work to make sure it's safe for everybody else.
So that's, this is a question for Sam then, for your custodials. Were still in those schools those days, even if it's closed on June 19th, correct?
No, if the school was closed, we wouldn't be in.
If it were a holiday.
They would, they'd have all?
If it's a holiday.
Oh, okay.
But we'd have to put that into an MOU and be very specific about conditions.
But when they talk about emergency, that would be affecting my department, I believe, is what they're talking about. No different than any other holiday. We have very few emergencies on holidays, and we're just...
I would knock on wood.
The woods need it.
Christmas included.
So, so the reason why Susan was bringing it up here is that we will be voting on it for this year, for the observance of June 19th. And, and maybe needing to get some more information, maybe from Lori, about how to just kind of make sure that we get that into the MOUs or whatever that we need to do for moving forward. But, so I just wanted to make sure that that got talked about. Thank you, Superintendent Austin. We're going to move to the business manager report.
Okay, so the updated object code summary, that's attachment number one, shows that we are anticipating about a $30,000 unexpended balance. This is a very, very tight window. We're currently in the process of looking at the final bills for the year. We still have May and June to go, so we will be making estimates for those, depending on when they come in. We found that electricity cost is coming in much higher. We have had some additional students come in for special education that we didn't anticipate. However, site budgets are coming in under budget, which could allow for us to pay for our bid list. Things like the snow plowing is, of course, under budget this year, thankfully. So we are still anticipating that we're going to come in at our budgeted amount of $79, 79,157.
Go ahead, Andrea.
And if there are, if there is money left over, do we return that to the town, correct?
Yeah, we return it to the town. Superintendent Austin and I would, would discuss how that would be.
We've actually done a nice job putting it back into OPEB or TELH savings as well. We've had opportunities to do that, to be really responsible. So we'll be grateful to come in.
Yeah, I anticipate there being much.
With a little, like, quark stroke.
Any further comment about the object code? Right, moving on to the insurance.
Health insurance claims report for the month of March came in, this is attachment number two, came in at 121.1% of anticipated claims for the month of March. Year-to-date, we're at 91.2%. And as we've discussed before, this is a trend that we anticipate. Folks use up their, their deductibles in the first half of the year. Second half of the year tends to be more, more claims. This compares with last, last March at 108%, so it's a little bit higher. But on a year-to-date basis, we're actually a little bit lower. We did, we don't usually get it this early in the month, but we did get the April of 2023 report. And so that's showing that we're going to be at 102% for the month of April. So it's kind of flowing the way we anticipate. I fully anticipate that we will be within our anticipated number at the end of, end of this year.
Wow.
Great.
Wow.
That is good.
Yeah, that is good.
Any questions about the insurance? All right, we'll move on. I am sorry to the board if they'd like to see the full, the full version of, of this room, but sometimes I just, it's important for me to see who's there, and if hands get raised. I know you get in front, but I just wanted to let you know that that was more of my need. And so I apologize that I superseded your, you guys. But let's move on to the director building and grounds.
Good evening. I don't know if the rest of you noticed, but when Kate was doing her report, she had some notes on her phone. I have my notes here, I'm a little bit jealous of the young people with their eyes. Moving on, I have a couple of things to report on. The first is that last week, we did receive our bids for both the sewer project at Fitch High School and the Northeast Academy Drainage Project. So the first phase of the drainage project and the sewer project will start as soon as school is out. Those contractors have been selected and vetted, so we're all set on it. We also met with Mr. Daniel Locke at Groton Middle School to work on the promotion layout, which will be on June 8th. There are lots of moving pieces that we're, we're running around to all the elementary schools for all of their events that are coming up, field days, promotions at those schools as well. So we're moving furniture and equipment to those on almost daily basis now. So those are the things that I have for now, and any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
When, now that our CIPs have been approved, when do you start on the, was it the, no, isn't the roof? Is it what? No?
That's from last year.
That was from last year.
That's from last year. One of the other advertisements that we had out and came in last week was, I think I told you in an earlier meeting this year that the state has changed their process regarding grant projects. And previously, we were able to select architects and then move forward with a project. They now require us to go out to bid or to ask for our RFQ for architects. So we have to, and we got eight submissions for that. And so Rick Norris and I are putting a spreadsheet together to look at all the qualifications for the architects. And that will be the first project that we start with, with the architect, is the Charles Barnham Roof Project.
Jay?
Mr. Kilpatrick, following up on our finance meeting from earlier this month, I saw that since that meeting, the town has approved, if I'm not mistaken, the field lights for Groton Middle School. And I'm just curious, what is the rest of that timeline? I think you might have been waiting for FAA approval or something?
Yes, the light project is moving forward. Kent and Frost are working on the finalized plans. And we will be submitting that to the town on the, I think it's the 28th, we'll be going for that. And hopefully, we'll be ordering supplies. It looks like a fall project. It won't, it certainly won't happen before school starts with the timeframe for getting the supplies in. So that would be after school starts.
Jay, do you have another question?
No, all over my hand, thank you.
I have a question.
Rita?
So when I read in the paper that the town would also be putting lights at Paquonic Plains Park, is that correct?
That I don't know, I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
I read the paper daily.
So they mentioned Groton Middle, and they mentioned Paquonic Plains. And so I was curious whether or not that would impact our, some of our sports that are played down at Paquonic Plains, if they'd be able to play like later in the evening, or?
Certainly during the fall, you know, it gets dark pretty early.
Yeah.
I think Yogi Berra had a comment about that.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Getting dark early. But that would be helpful there, along with the middle school project as well.
Yes, they mentioned both of them, and they said so many people use the walking path in the, you know, during the pandemic and everything, and they felt that they should light, light it. So I assume we'd have some lights there. Well, maybe that's something that Mark Romano needs to, just be in contact with the park and rec, and to see what that is.
I, I thought Jay might be asking about the solar project, and that wasn't on my list. At least, maybe it was on this phone and not on my iPad. The solar project is moving along as well, too, and again, that will be a fall project for us. That has hit a little bit of a snag in that the method of attaching them to the roof, it was supposed to be a ballast system, which is weighted down. They're concerned about the winds up there. And so we're now looking at penetrate, more penetrations in a roof than we had initially thought. So again, Rick Norris and I are working with them on a daily basis to determine whether we can accept their change at this point. So working with their engineer on that one still. But again, that will be a fall project.
I have one more question. Last year, I remember Liz brought up that, about our charging, the charging stations at our schools, and that, you know, the Board of Education pays for those. So I believe we had a COW about it, or we were going to, to talk about whether or not they could be turned off on the weekends, or if it was feasible after school. I was wondering, just swinging back, has any, has anything ever happened with that?
It's probably something we probably should have talked at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting about. But I'm in favor of, if, if it's your wish to actually turn them off on weekends, if you think that's what we should do.
Is it, I think last time you were going to check.
We can do it.
You can do it, okay.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
We could do that. I think we'd have some upset neighbors.
Yes, but that's okay. There are, the town has quite a few of them.
So would you like to have that, I know that we're not at that, but to add that to the finance and facilities, to talk about that?
Yeah, let's talk about that. We probably need to also find out from the town what they're doing on weekends with everything.
Any other questions for Mr. Kilpatrick?
Paid them well, huh? But I do want to say thank you to Superintendent Austin, to Ken Knight, and to Sam Kilpatrick for, you know, walking the board's budget across the finish line with our colleagues at the Town Council and the RTM, which has finalized their budget process and have approved our budget. So I would like to say thank you to your staff for taking our budget and, and helping it get to fruition, so thank you very much.
And thank you, and the board, for the support.
Yeah.
On the journey.
Yeah, it's been a journey.
It's been a journey.
All right, so I'm going to move us to committee, oh, yeah, that word, committee reports. And I'm just going to start off with policy.
So I can tell you all about it here, or I can tell you all about it when we do.
Would you like to say that for the discussion?
It's, that's up to you.
Why don't you say that for the discussion?
All right, okay.
Is that all that you would have? Just the teacher. So curriculum, that would be Liz.
Yep, so we've had, a couple of things have happened. There will be a pilot next year for a course that's kind of a capstone project for the Project Lead the Way, and that is going to be called the Engineering Design and Development Class. And it has about a number of students. Right now, there's eight that are registered for it, but they're trying to get more kids involved. And these are students that have gone all the way through with Project Lead the Way. And this is their ability, now is this, this is their time to demonstrate their knowledge and to learn how to become designers and engineer type of thing. So we're very excited that that's going to be in a pilot program for next year. We also had an update about the EMT class from Principal Kelleher. And we began a discussion on the Teachers College Writing Program that we are going to be looking at, a lot of different research, a lot of different articles, and to, you know, for further discussion, that's going to begin in September. One of the things that we are looking at also is that there's the Financial Literacy requirement that has begun, that the state has come out with. Unfortunately, their verbiage is quite nebulous. So we don't know if it's for the class of 2027, or if it begins in 2027. So we're waiting on some clarification there. But we also went through, we have a number of, of a list of anybody's interested, I know Matthew, you are, of all the courses that are offered for Financial Literacy. But one of the things that we discovered is that we're not quite sure even of what the state deems as Financial Literacy. So these are terms that we have to make sure that we're in compliance with. So that's, that's for future discussion. The other thing I just want to inform the board, and this is also at the, on the calendar at the end, is that I'm traveling a lot this summer, and therefore, we're not going to be holding a curriculum committee meeting until September. So no June? No June.
July, August.
Excuse me?
June, July, August.
June, July, and August. We're going to have a little bit of a hiatus, allow for people to do their work this summer. There's a lot of curriculum writing going on. And just to get some things fleshed out, and then come back strong in September. Thank you, Liz, for your leadership.
Finance and facilities, Jay?
Yes, we met on May 2nd, and as we discussed already earlier in this meeting, we, we basically reviewed... And as we discussed already earlier in this meeting, we basically reviewed the unexpended funds, the financial implications of Juneteenth, the field lights, and the solar. And that was it.
Thank you, Jay.
Communications?
Communications had its monthly meeting tonight. We went over the final draft with a fine-tooth comb of the communication plan. And as a result, we will vote on it next month. But I think we're going to have a strong plan for you. I hope to get it to you well before the month. We'll send it out to everybody so they can read it in advance.
Thank you.
The other things, we're working to reschedule a date for the PTO meeting. This is a meeting designed for the parents so that we can ask them what collaboration they want amongst themselves, what support in a perfect world they would like from us, and then we can decide what we can actually do. We will not be promoting any particular thing. This is to be driven by the parents with our support for the parents and the children. We are going to be taking up a communication strategy for Realtors. It may be more than Realtors because I did look online, looked at the town and city website, looked at economic development, looked at the two chambers of commercees, looked at the HR, HR offices and the major employers. And to the best of my knowledge, none of them has any information about our school district. So, I'm hoping that a single document may be adequate to advance our education for prospective residents of the town.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a point about that, I know looking at different real estate sites in our area, like they have Groton Long Point, the students going to West Side. They have all the different areas, they have the students going to schools that are closed. So, I think it does need, you know?
It needs to be cleaned up.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Definitely.
I think we can, we can, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful we can enlist the PTO leadership. These are parents who have a vested and demonstrated interest in the success of the students and the district, that they will be able to put reviews on great schools and other sites. And maybe we can encourage great schools to include the actual schools that are functioning in our district.
How welcoming it would be for family looking in our town to go to a closed down school.
Right.
Thank you, Rita.
It wouldn't be crowded.
That won't be crowded, you're right. So, negotiations, we are in the middle of, we'll be holding actually our second meeting with the parent educators. And I think that that is next week on the 31st of, which is a Wednesday. So, that will be our next meeting. And Rita, Learn?
Yes. We, let's see, we, Mike Beldon, who is the finance gentleman at Learn, presented the budget and it was approved by the board. Also, in terms of the legislative updates, HB 5003 was not fully funded by the State of Connecticut, which means that there is no additional magnet school fundings available to districts. We were hoping that the state would take over so that we wouldn't have to pay for our students going to magnet schools, but that wasn't funded. The other thing is Learn is not in support of a legislative proposal that would prohibit the use of seclusion and restraint for child safety. So, they're, they're concerned that, you know, if this bill goes through, and I actually read even it's, even in the, in Congress, the federal, they're thinking of doing this. So, they're, they're not in favor of this at all because a lot of times it's for the safety of the students in the classroom and the child itself. So, the other ones, there's a bill concerning financial literacy, which you talked about, that is still hasn't, it's presented, but it hasn't been voted on yet. And then there's a Bill of Rights for English Language Learners that the legislature is looking into. And also, an Act for Student Meals, whether or not the state is going to continue to pay for student meals. But Learn, in terms of Learn itself, the Friendship School, which is in Waterford, they're hoping to move that school to 51 Daniels Avenue in Waterford on a new site. The town of Waterford would like the site back where the Friendship School is located right near Waterford High School. And there's a lot of traffic in this area, and they would just like that site back. Even though it was built by the State of Connecticut, 50% of students were supposed to come from New London, 50% from Waterford, and then Waterford pulled out after a number of years. The fifth, the kindergarten class, the five-year-olds at the Friendship School will now be going up to the Magnet School in New London, the Multicultural Magnet School. And they've also signed a lease for 58 Pennsylvania Avenue for their Transition Academy. So, it'll be moving from Route 1 in Niantic to, which is much better for the students. They could go out, they could walk to jobs, and it's a much better site and a bigger site. So, that's about it.
Is that the old lighthouse?
Yes, it's, the lighthouse has moved out, and so.
Yeah. Oh, I turned the page, sorry. So, the Town and City and Council, RTM, Board of Ed Liaison Meeting is on our thing, it's June 1st. And that's actually going to be hosted by the RTM. And so, that is for the liaison, the AGSA, the DEA, and the Board of Ed Liaison. We are going to be at Par 4.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, for members of the Board of Ed, of the Liaison Committee. And that's going to be at Par 4. Groton Scholarships?
Yes, I have wonderful news. We have 46 recipients will be receiving some form of a Groton Scholarship at, on Scholarship Night, which was it, the 30th or 31st? I just had it written down and I lost it, but anyway. We had a total of $42,100 that was donated for the scholarship. So, we did quite well. We have top, three top, three, three top earners, I mean winners, of that will receive $4,000 each. And then there's increments that go all the way. So, but everybody who applied received something. So, I think that's really quite remarkable.
Very cool. Thank you.
Senior Scholarship, May 30th, 6:30.
When is it, I'm sorry?
It's on our little list.
I know.
It's my cheat sheet, end year activities. So, it is the 30th, May 30th, 6:30 PM, Senior Scholarship Awards and Honor Awards.
Thank you.
Jay, Athletic? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. Some students don't know until graduation when they see their name in the book, though. Is that correct? I think that that is more when they get the book awards.
No, that's junior year's book awards.
Junior year's book awards. So, but I thought a lot of the times, the students found out the night of graduation if they received some of the Groton Scholarship. Did they change it?
I don't know. I honestly don't know.
Okay.
Well, I've been at those, the award ceremonies, and when I, I would give my own scholarship.
Oh, that's right, too. You usually give it, because I don't go up anymore. That's true, yeah. I do hope, though, that the students, the recipients write to the people or just acknowledge the scholarship. I mentioned it to you another time. I think sometimes you get a thank you and other times, you don't even know who received it. Like last year, the high school didn't send out their, you know, the booklet saying who received what.
Well, I have the list if you want to look.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to move us on. Jay, Athletic Fields, has there been any new meetings?
Uh, no, they have not met.
Trails?
The June, there is nothing to report. They will have their quarterly meeting in June.
Oh, there is something about Trails. We received it in our board notes and was also in the paper, June 3rd, Groton Public Schools in conjunction. I was so pleased to see that with Groton Open Space will be helping to lead the, on the National Trails Day, which is June 3rd.
Very exciting. We've been really working hard. I think I give a lot of credit to Dr. Kennedy, who is a hiker himself, and making those connections. And we've had day field experiences within many of our schools where we've had some of our student hikers join Gosa and do some hikes.
Oh, that's great.
It's been wonderful. We want to see more of it.
So, there, Matthew.
There we go. Well.
How about the library?
I have to finish Penitence first. Library, the Public Library Board met a week ago. There were comments made about present and potential future collaboration with Groton Public Schools librarians. And the, our librarians had been, there was some question raised about collaboration on policy. And so, the library, the public library is inviting any librarians in our system to attend their policy meetings and keep their, keep us in sync with one another.
I see Liz Ann with her thumb up. I think she's already been invited.
Department School Building Committee, have, have they met?
They haven't met in some time.
Okay.
Last couple of months.
Okay. So, maybe you and Dean could just have a brief conversation about what our role is in that, or what your role is in that. That, I think that would be helpful if you would be willing, the two of you, Dean, Sam. Sam, Dean. That'd be great, thank you. State Council of Educational Opportunities for Military Children.
Yes, we met on May 11th. And there was a great deal of discussion about, well, one of the things we talked about was a Penn State study on, that they're doing on the compact. And I took, I took the survey, well, I guess it's a survey, it was supposed to be training, but it was more like a survey. And it didn't tell me anything that I didn't already know. So, maybe I'll take it again and see what's what. But there was a lot of discussion about the meaning of deployment. So, there's going to be a, a study of that. Because, you know, does, does deployment and the time off that a student would get, does that mean every three weeks when Dad goes out on the submarine for, you know, some training, that's deployment? And does the, the application of those days apply there? Or is it really meaning when they're, you're out to sea for six months? So, they're, they're looking at that. And there's a new training on the, I think it's on this coming Wednesday. And that's on the Purple State Program. And that's looking at, at the idea that military children move every three years. So, that can mean as many as nine, is that correct, Susan? It seems to me that's how many times you moved.
That's about right.
In, in a child's career. At school. So, the new training is going to be looking at, how do we help with the coping of that? It's called, pardon me, the Purple State Program. I'm sorry. And finally, they decided that they were not going to include the National Guard in the, in the compact because of the various differentiations in, in how states man the National Guard. And it was too unwieldy. And the last thing, and I think this is all, the last thing was that, and to me, this has profound ramifications. And that is Utah is considering withdrawing from the compact. So, that's, that's, that's a big deal. And I think, did I cover everything?
You covered it.
Okay, then. Done. Oh, no. June 13th, there's a military entrance. And it's talking about the idea of college and career readiness in terms of states. And that's, the captain of the base, Miranda, will be there. Bob Ross will be there, Susan Ne.
So, I have been bringing it to the state's attention over and over again, until finally I got Ajit from the state to come down and meet with us. Because I said, how is it that 30 of my students every year either enlist or go to a military academy, but don't get credit for it on our report card as college career readiness? Not even if they go to the Naval Academy, do they get credit? So, I think it has to do with how we keep the records and how Department of Defense doesn't necessarily know how to share the records and, and really pinpoint the student to what school. So, I think we're, we've really been working on this project for two years and calling people at Department of Defense. The captain has helped out, Bob Ross has helped out. And I think we do have some resolutions, so we're meeting with Ajit. It's something as simple as when you have orders or you enlist, you bring the paperwork or you're, or you bring your appointment to the academy, to the school that gets copied and then submitted somehow on Power School as, yes, you're officially going to be serving our country, and you should get credit, that's a career opportunity. So, sometimes you can't let things go, you just have to keep on, keep it on.
Keep fighting a good fight.
Yep. So, it should be good news. So, I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. That's great. So, we'll move us on to action items. The next one is the Consent Agenda, which all matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, they'll be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. Can I have a motion for the Consent Agenda? So moved.
I'll second it.
I have Liz, and it's been seconded by?
Rita.
Rita, thank you. And so, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. The board would like to thank Sujin Vasant, who has donated a $200 gift card to Burnett's Country Gardens in San Antonio, Connecticut for use by the Groton Middle School Gardening Club in campus beautification. How cool.
Have a question?
Yes.
A couple of years ago, the town set up a beautification committee, which is working around town. And I'm wondering if there's any opportunity for synergy with that. I don't need anything tonight, but if you can think of any synergy, Susan, let me know.
I know a few people on that committee, I might reach out.
Me too.
Yeah. I think you do know.
That'd be great if you would want to reach out to see if there's any, and then to bring that back to Susan, because it would be under Susan's purview.
Okay.
That'd be great. I love it when we can do that. Liz?
Yeah.
Can I please have you read the first motion?
Motion is to approve Policy P 6163.1, Library Material Selection as a First Reading.
So, folks, this was, put us on, on table for actually almost three rounds. The first two was just because our, we were just too busy during the other two meetings. And then it did get pulled, because my understanding is that the, that there was a more information that was coming from the state, and we needed to get more information. So, is that correct? Okay.
And you actually have the workings of that in green on, on where you see the objective of the selection, and then the selection personnel that is really involved in cultivating, curating the materials that go into a library, to make sure they're reflecting a broad diversity of culture and worldviews. So, I have to thank Liz Ann and, and also her colleagues, because they really worked with us to not only look at the policy, but it's really regulations or the working of the staff underneath the superintendent, that we want the regulations to match how it actually has to unfold. So, a polish, policy is usually short and sweet, and that's the working of the board. So, it's important that, you know, you read this policy and approve it, and then the regulations then will follow as how we put it into play.
Andrew, do you have anything else to add to that?
I just have to say that we brought the language up to date, and there was some really vague wording in here that talked about principles. And it said that the decision to be guided by principles, not PALS, PLES. And the question that I, came to my mind was, well, whose principles are those?
I said the same thing.
So, so Susan was really astute about this. I, I would never have thought about it, but she did. And she added, the principles that are under, that are held up by the School Library Bill of Rights, Freedom of to Read Statement, the American Library Association, and the Connecticut Department of Education, which really strengthens.
To specify what we're talking about.
That's right, yeah. And I don't think that there's anything else.
But there, is there anything that you would like to add to the discussion? And if you, and if you do, we're going to, I'll throw a mic to you.
And if you, and if you do, we're gonna, I'll throw a mic to you. Well, probably won't throw it, but I'm wondering if she could borrow your mic.
Em, did we get a second for that motion?
Oh. Oh, you're so, you're so silly. Yes, can I have a second to the motion that we've already discussed? Matt has seconded. Thank you, Ms. Joan.
Thank you. I'm Lizanne Johnson. I'm a library media specialist at Groton Middle School and Fitch High School. I just want to stress the importance for us in the job at how many book challenges are taking place. So having our policy up to date will protect our district and our town from frivolous book banning and book challenges. We worked very hard. The librarians worked in November on the regulations. And we followed the American Library Association. We, the New Jer, New Jersey has a fantastic state-approved policy. And so we used that as guidelines. So we really, we really did our research. But we appreciate all that you do. If there are questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Rita? No, my question is not, not for you.
Okay.
On the second page, it, are we going to be rewording this? So it's a Groton Board of Education and then Board in green in parentheses again? Or how, how does that work? Right on the first line?
On the back page of the first page.
This is under the regulations.
Oh. Well, under library material, yeah, responsibility. So would it, would it say Groton Board of Education and then in parentheses, Board again?
I think it either says the Groton Board of Education. It says, and then from here on out, we'll be calling it just the Board.
I see.
So when you put it in parentheses, you're saying for future reference, we'll just call it the Board.
Just call it the Board, just like the district is a district.
Right, right.
I had the same question for Erica, and she corrected me. And she said what Susan said.
Thank you. Dean?
So there was mention of frivolous challenging. Is what in here is designed to tamp down on that or to eliminate or to control it?
Isn't it in the regulations, Susan?
It is in the regulations. It really talks about that it would have to be a parent of a student who is currently in Groton Public Schools, that it couldn't be someone from Iowa or Florida or somewhere else, you know?
One of those other states.
One of those other states or places. I mean, that's one that comes to mind.
Right. It's the second to the last page.
And the mannequin?
I, no, I, I'm sorry.
Did you want to come up and?
Yeah.
Because she has more.
Once a book has been challenged, they can't be challenged again for five years. What they're finding in other states is that groups will challenge a book 125 times and you have to revisit that 125 times by stating that we will only revisit a book after five years and that we're keeping it local.
Yes.
You have to have a vested interest, you have to have a vested interest in Groton Public Schools to be able to challenge a book that our libraries have.
I believe also one has to articulate in one's challenge specifically what it is one finds troublesome.
Right.
Specifically what it is that one finds would be harmful to a student. And the book would not be, or material would not be removed from circulation during the period of the review.
That's exactly right. Thank you for reminding us that. Thank you.
Dean?
So if I may be so bold, and, and it's not for you. You can, you can, you can sit down. You don't have to stand up at the mic anymore. I'm voting no, because this tracks the, the Library Bill of Rights, the School Library Bill of Rights, et cetera, the Freedom of Read Statement, which is, actually goes back a great number of years. Because these emanate from the American Library Association, which I wouldn't trust as far as I can throw it with respect to its judgment of what's appropriate or not appropriate. So principles that have anything to do with that organization, I don't trust. So I'm voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Discussion?
I could go into detail, but I don't think it would matter here.
I'm not trying to, I would never try to stop your freedom of your speech.
No, I understand, but I've, I've made a judgment call that just steady my objection.
Okay. I appreciate that. Hearing no further discussion. All those in motion to approve the Policy P 6163 dot 1, Library Material Selection as a First Reading, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. William, would you be willing to read the motion for number two, please?
A motion to approve Policy P 5123, Promotion, Retention, Graduation as a First Reading.
Can I have a second?
Second.
See, Ms. Joan, I can be taught. Discussion. Andrea?
I think we're just up to date on this. I think everything is, is pretty clear. The only thing I want to mention is that we need a, if you go down to the second paragraph on the first page versus prior to the end of the school year, and then you see any deviation from the progress mentioned in the first paragraph. I'm going to strike the word mentioned. I don't think there's any place for it there. And I, I thought about it what, before, when we met, we met. And then I just thought it was too superfluous. But I, when I read it again today, I said, that has to go.
So it just says an edit?
And then on the next page, in the middle school, promotion and retention. And that's on the, the, you're, you're part of this. Not the policy, the regulation. There's an oxer comma missing.
Oh, my goodness. And I'm so careful with those now. I've learned so much.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll.
So these are two editing?
I'll tell you where it goes. So we'll see how good a student I am up here soon.
Okay, tell me. Well, you can tell me later.
So this one really is, when we, we noticed that this particular policy really jives with the one that you've already approved on graduation requirements. So we had to really update it so that it also, simple things like on the first page, we no longer have CMTs, so we have Smarter Balance, and we have Next Generation Science Standards. So we had to update. And then certainly with, in the regulations, we had to update the current classes versus the upcoming classes with our new, newly voted on graduation requirements. So they, this now is aligned with the, the policy that has already been approved.
And there's one worth it.
Okay.
On the regulations, on page three or three, three or four. There's no S on, just one stem, one stem credit. So the S has to go.
Okay.
That's it.
You were right about that.
Can I, do you have more, Andrea? Do you have more corrections?
That's it.
That's it. I had a question about the middle school promotion and retention. If a student fails one subject or two, two or more, they could be given a special promotion or may be retained in the same grade another year. My question is, like in our high school, we give those students an opportunity to go to summer school. Do we do that in the middle school?
Yes, we do. This year, I've asked the principals to look at any child who's failed a core subject, and they'll go to Fitch High School for credit recovery.
Wonderful.
So that they can continue. We're sharing that information with parents. We think, you know, ninth grade is kind of a gatekeeper. If our ninth graders aren't successful, then it really correlates with graduation and not graduating. So we said, it really is important that our eighth graders, if they failed a course like their grade eight math, then to put them in algebra in ninth grade without some credit recovery is really putting them in a poor position. So this should really give them leverage. And we're gonna, I think that Peter even has some things that he socked up his sleeve to really, to promote that and to also, you know, give kids some acknowledgement of them doing that work over the summer. So I'm really happy about their response to that. Good question. Liz. Oh, I'm sorry, Liz.
I'm sorry. I just, I remember I asked about increasing the social studies credits to four. And I had asked for some data about how many students take more than three credits, and I've never received that data. And I think that speaks to this policy. And so I feel like, you know, if we're looking to increase the number of credits for world language, but I also brought up the idea of, of the concept about, you know, especially in this day and age, we need to increase. I believe personally that we need to increase our social studies credits. We are becoming more of a global society. We need to have students who are educated in the democratic process and not just a, you know, a, a brief thing. I think we really need to encourage that. And I just was wondering, I don't remember, I'm sorry, but I don't remember voting on the number of requ, the credits that we were going to allow. I don't remember that vote. I don't remember when that happened. It could have happened when I had to take a couple of times off, but I don't remember that happening.
It did happen. But I, I'm sorry you didn't get the data. I think that was sent out, but I will double check and make sure you get the credits.
So, but I still think that's something that we as a board need to continue to explore. Because quite frankly, when you have three credits and you have one and a half are already dedicated to something, I, I just don't think we're doing due diligence to our, our society. And I.
I totally agree.
I just wanted to like us to continue exploring that option, please.
So, so Liz, how do you want us to continue to keep that on our foreground? Would you like to have that be thrown into?
The tracker.
The, the curriculum referral sheet so that you could kind of continue to have that in the curriculum?
We could do that. That would be fine. I really would like also to, maybe through that, we'll be able to talk to the teachers and get some input from the teachers.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
So I think that's a really good thing. So Dr. Piazza and Dr. Harding and Dr. Akramimkan, let's make sure we put that in our list. Look at that. I've got three doctors and I'm the only one without the doctor in front of my name. That's okay. But let's, we're going to put that as a future topic. We'll put that on our tracking sheet. Is that the thing?
Referral sheet.
Referral sheet. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, I think that, I think you're bringing up a really good point. And I think, but let's not lose that.
No.
Because that policy has passed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that policy cannot be relooked with new information. So.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to tell Mrs. Porter to take two aspirin and we'll put it on the docket.
I'm sorry, couldn't you?
We couldn't hear you.
Take two aspirin and we'll put it on the docket. That's the doctor.
You know, and maybe in the future, it'd be nice to know how many students are retained. I, I don't think many students are retained anymore. So it'd be interesting to see whether or not from elementary all the way through, if students are really retained, you know, if, if, because it, it doesn't sound like it from this policy.
So, so that, that actually wouldn't, like a, just a global, how, how hard would that be for the, for us to give that disaggregated?
You tend to see it more in kindergarten.
Right.
And that's why we designed the TK program, because we knew that there were very young kindergartners coming. And sometimes it was no fault of theirs. They were just not ready for.
Well, I think of it as a report at the end of the year, just like a retention. I mean, just like our suspension and expulsion report.
Yep.
Like in the summer.
Yep.
So I'm going to bring us back to the policy. Any for the conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve Policy P 5123, Promotion, Retention, Graduation as a First Reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has passed.
Since this is a first reading, isn't it possible for the, the policy committee to rethink about the four credits in a social science?
So that is a different policy and that has already been passed by second reading?
We did pass that.
Yeah. Rita? Would you please be willing to read the motion for number three?
Sure.
Thank you.
To approve the observation of Juneteenth on June 19th, 2023 for 12 months employees.
Can I have a second to that, please? I have Dr. Morgan. So we've had the discussion already. Jay?
So, um, reading this, this motion, um, I'm just concerned. It, it approves the observation of Juneteenth on June 19th, 2023. And it adds this 12-month employee, which I don't know that that is, is relevant to what the public would understand. I, I would propose that, that, um, to amend it to approve the annual observation of Juneteenth beginning June 19th, 2023 and just leave it there. But I don't know if anybody would support that amendment.
I would support that.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so, oh, Ms. Joan, walk me through this. So I now have an amendment on the floor and it has been seconded by Matthew. So now do I go into discussion about the amendment?
See.
Okay.
There is any.
If there is any, okay. So do we want to have discussion on the, the motion to approve the annual observation of June 19th?
Yes, because all this says is that we're going to do it on June 19th this year, and that's it.
Yeah. I see that. That's how I read it, that this is, this was only going to be a one-shot deal. And I think we need, if this is what we're going to be doing, then it's something that needs to be an annual event.
So I think the reason, and I'm not saying it's a good reason. I'm just saying the reason why I put it specifically for just this year is because I wasn't quite sure about any of the MOUs and, and stuff that had to be done. And so I just wanted to kind of like make sure that we could get it for this year. But that I would be advocating that we then moved to having it. I mean, I don't care what, I, I, my, my concern was just to make sure that I wanted to get it done for this year specifically. I do feel like it's an annual thing, but I wanted to make room for the MOUs and such. And so maybe that doesn't have to be part of our motion. Maybe that's understood that if we are celebrating the June 19th annually, that if there is anything that comes out of, like if we're like in school until June 25th, gosh forbid.
That'll all be in the MOU.
That would be in the MOU.
Do you want to speak to that, Lori?
Yeah, I would just, I think the edit is fine. We would have to do an MOU with the union body anyway, just to define how exactly it will logistically function. So we can do that.
Okay.
Rita?
I believe that we were going to have a discussion about this with the different unions and possibly giving back a day, like a different day, like Indigenous People's Day or, because it, it is another paid holiday. So how many, you know, that's why I thought we were going to have a further discussion about this with the MOUs and so forth, with the unions.
So at an earlier part of the discussion, let's make sure that I heard this, is that it's, it's just that we won't be paying them for June 19th, but if the school is still in session, they would come to school and work June 20th. Is that, did I understand that? So that's how we were going to, that, that's how they were going to take care of that?
I know that. It's still a day, it's still a day off. It's, it's still, it's still a paid holiday. No matter how you look at it, it has to affect some employees some way, and there has to be some cost. And whether or not do we need, you know, I mean, to have this day at the end of June, it's just, I don't know.
Lori, do you want to speak to what the MOUs would do?
Yeah, the only, the only bargaining unit impacted by this decision is the Maintenance Custodial IT Secretary's Unit. However, the only individuals would be Maintenance Custodian IT staff that work 12 months, who would be impacted, that we would need to meet with them to work on an MOU together. The other units are impacted because what would happen is if June 19th is observed and we needed to run the school calendar either past to June 19th or past June 19th, it wouldn't be a paid holiday for them, because they don't receive paid holidays. They may be off work, but that day would then be added onto the school calendar at a later time, whether June 20th, 21st, whatever date that is. We would add it.
Let's say, so that would be 13 paid holidays as opposed to 12, like right now, for the teachers?
For the 12-month employees, yes. But for the employees that do not. For the twelve-month employees, yes, but for the employees that do not work twelve months and work the school calendar, they're not paid holidays. They're just non-work days for them. Yep.
Any other discussion around that? And we are talking about the amendment.
The amendment, right. So initially I would be in favor of if you're going to do it for one year, just do it for eternity. But, so the only value in just leaving it for this year, as you said, is as to leave us kind of space to consider this fully and then the next time. So I see some value in that. On the other hand, maybe there isn't very much to the MOU thing. Maybe we've already discussed a bit. I'm, I'm sort of of two minds on this one. Should we have a further discussion to make sure we're all on board with it? We know all the ramifications or do we think we've heard enough about that? In which case, then let's just go with the amendment. I'm, I frankly have two minds on it.
Thanks, Dean.
Well, there has to be an impact to students because i- if there is no school and it's close to the end of the school year and there's a day off, good chance that the students aren't going to come back after this, you know, even if they're supposed to. That, that's just my thought.
Yeah, you can kiss that day goodbye, pretty much. But you might anyway, frankly. I mean, yeah, let's, let's be honest, when I was in school, same thing. Last couple of days of school, phew, yeah, not a lot going on for students.
Especially after seniors have done graduation.
Yeah.
Right. Jay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was simply going to say that, you know, it's already a, um, national state and local holiday, um, and we have the same issue with, with snow days. We don't know how many snow days there'll be at the end of the year. And there are people, for example, who don't come to work when it snows. And sometimes we have many more than one or two. So, um, I, I know we said that for a couple of people it's going to affect productivity. I guess snow days do that as well. But I just think that, um, again, I, I just, uh, support that we build this amendment.
Matthew.
I was of two minds, as you know, I sent a note, uh, in response to Susan's letter with a calculation of cost which further, uh, I had been educated as to my miscalculation. Why, I made another mistake just eight years ago. So I just want to know, Ken, if it's possible, um, uh, if it's possible, what the dollar figure, just a ballpark on the dollar figure cost is for the, um, for doing this i- if in an event, in a year where we go past June nineteenth? I mean, are we talking three thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars? What, what are we talking for cost?
I, I don't know, but specifically you want to know for the impacted folks, which we calculated to be eighty-eight people, calculate.
I, I trust you on that. So if we have eighty, stipulate that we have eighty-eight people and if it's eighty-seven or ninety-two, you will still get the send for general sense.
It's, it's how mu- how much they get paid for a day? Is that, is that what the question is?
What, what would the impact be on the budget?
There is no impact.
There, there is no impact.
There is no impact, okay.
If, if, if there were no work, uh, they'd get paid for the day. If there were work, they'd get paid for the day.
Okay.
So that's, that's where I'm, uh.
So I'm clarified that for, for those eighty-eight people, there's no financial impact. And if I'm understanding correctly, for those who are on a contractual basis based on the number of days served, there would be no impact, they would just adjust the situation. Am I correct in my understanding now?
Yeah. And then the only impact could possibly be if, if employees were called in for an emergency, uh, that would be.
That's understood. Okay.
And I think the work that we have to get done in the summer to get the schools back ready again will still get done. There's just, there's these projects that we just get done and sometimes people just work harder at it to get it done in the days that they're there. And they team up a lot. I know that Sam does a great job at like all hands on deck in schools as they go. So just to know that the work will still get done.
Bev, I, I see that you have your hand raised, but I'm just going to interject one thing. So let's be clear, we want to celebrate the June, the June nineteenth. Um, I, I think what I'm hearing is the logistics if we're in school past that time at other years, but there's going to be other information to make those decisions around that. And so, um, I just wanted to also be clear about that, that, that we are about making sure that we celebrate this holiday, um, but we're just concerned about logistics in the future if those arise. But I would like to recognize Bev.
Thank you, Kim. Can Jay repeat his amendment and explain it again, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. Jay, would you like to say the amendment, please?
Uh, yes, I, um, had proposed that we say to approve the annual observation of Juneteenth beginning June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Agree.
And the reasoning being that, you know, it is now a federal, state and local holiday. Uh, and this way it won't have to come up for a vote every year and have us, you know, need for us to remember to put it on the agenda, vote for it again when it's already been enshrined as a holiday at all other levels.
But that would be happening anyways, correct Lori? If there was something was to happen, you would be going and we would be working with each of the different contractual employees.
That's correct.
That's, okay. Bev?
Yeah, and Jay, what was your, um, why did you oppose having the twelve-month employees on that amendment?
Well, it sounds like, I don't know, it just seemed awkward to me. It, it sounds like they're the only ones that'll be observing. It, it just seemed awkward. We're, we're going to observe it as a district.
Right, that's right.
Now, uh, now, you know, obviously the twelve-month employees, there's going to be some, you know, some MOUs and that sort of thing. I don't know that that needs to be enshrined in the motion. This is a district-wide observation.
So if they aren't twelve-month employees, Beverly, and they're, you know, working the school year, then they would just have the calendar adjusted so that they would continue to work the days that they're contracted to work, but they would just shift it a day if that needed to happen. But we would still observe it.
I, I just don't think you need the word annually. I think if it said the motion to approve the observation of June nine, Juneteenth on June nineteen, twenty twenty-three period and just not have, because that means it's annual, you don't, and.
Beginning, right?
It's just to approve, we're approving it.
To approve the observation of June nineteenth, beginning June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, and then just drop off for twelve-month employees. I mean, you don't need to say annually because it's, it's implied, it's, you're approving it on that day forward.
All right, well, let's get first, this amendment done first. Jay?
I, I just respectfully believe that the motion should be clear, that we are not just observing it on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I, I think there needs to be some modification to indicate that it's June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three going, you know, and going forward.
Okay.
So by inserting annual, you know, to approve the annual observation, it makes it clear and doesn't require someone to come back and declare June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four to be a holiday. It just, we.
Okay.
We make it, um, we make it clear in the motion just by adding that and removing the reference to the, the twelve-month employees.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment?
I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I, I understand Rita's objection and, and particularly in terms of, you know, when I first, first saw this as a teacher and a principal, I said, how wacky is it to give a day off at the end of the year? That's until you really think about what the day means and it has nothing to do with what time, I wish it came into a different time of the year because it would then be more established. But, uh, you know, my first reaction was, at the end of the year, you're going to give a day off? But when you really consider what, what the day stands for, there's no question that it has to be.
Any further questions on the amendment? Hearing, none. The amendment that's on the floor is to approve the annual observation of June nineteenth, beginning June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those oppose? Abstain?
I'm abstaining.
That amendment has passed. Now I need to go back to the motion or just stay with the?
Back, back to the original, the main motion and ask if there's any more discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to.
Excuse me, point of clarification, we have passed this.
We have passed the amendment.
We passed the amendment, so, uh.
We amended the original motion, the main motion.
So we now have to vote on the, the amended main motion?
Mechanically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The original?
No, the amended main motion.
The main motion has amended.
The main motion has amended.
Okay, so I'm now going to go back. Do I have to get it first and second?
No.
Because it's big, okay.
No.
So thank you, uh, thank you, Dean. So all those in favor to approve the annual observation of June nineteenth, begin?
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, I am sorry. Juneteenth, beginning June nineteenth.
On.
On. June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three? Is there any discussion? No, I, I go just right through a vote, right?
No, no, right.
I'm, I'm correct.
Yeah, I meant, you might want to canvass if there's any more discussion, but I'm holding my eyes because I'm hoping there isn't any.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you were just trying to get ahead of. Any, any discussion?
Um, my only discussion would be, I really liked what Andrea had said about why you're observing this holiday and to maybe encourage the schools to do something on June eighteenth or June fifteenth, you know, a little earlier in the school year.
Yep.
So people understand what this holiday is all about. Just like if you, you know, some schools go to school on Veterans Day and they have a lovely ceremony that day. We have ours before the day. So again, we could do something like that for this holiday.
All right, if we're, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain?
Just one.
That motion has passed. Jay, um, letters or communications?
Uh, yes, so, um, I'm sure you all received the same emails that I did, um, from parents and others expressing their appreciation for our paraeducators. And while we can't say anything given that it's currently under negotiation, I, I certainly want anyone who's listening to this to know that I have nothing but the utmost respect and admiration for all of our educators, staff and administrators, including our paraeducators.
Thank you, Jay. Bev?
Same as Jay.
Matthew?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Dean?
Pass.
Liz?
I received those communications as well and I, I want to also say, yes, we appreciate all that the pares do, as well as all of our other staff. I also received a communication from Irene Weiss, who is the voter regis- for voter registration from the League of Women's Voters. And, um, I've put her in contact with Principal Kelleher to see if we can do another drive to, um, register students, our seniors. So I wanted to, um, give a shout out to Irene for, and thank her for getting in contact with me. I also wanted to say, um, as earlier stated by our student rep, that the Fitch Pops concert was absolutely phenomenal. Uh, I did not have the opportunity unfortunately to go to the choir and chorus one, but I did get to go to the, the instrumental one. It, they blew my socks off, literally. I couldn't believe how wonderful, how much they had grown over the year. And I just wanted, I really want to say to the, the music department at Fitch High School, fabulous, well done, so.
Thank you, Liz. William?
Nothing.
Okay. Rita?
We received the same letters about the pares and I really appreciate hearing from the parents. And, um, the other question I had was in our minutes from our meeting on the twenty-fourth, Mrs. Borderline had asked about the, um, the indication on report cards about whether or not a student has received or achieved honor roll. And in your notes, Kim, it says here, Mrs. Shepperson Watson noted that she will add this item to the board template. Did you mean the C O W?
Um, so I meant, um, the template, I think, um, just to add that to making sure that when we go over the report cards, because that is, uh, an annual review of report cards, I think.
But isn't that something we could just vote on and, and speak to, hear from the high school staff and, you know?
Um, I think that, I think that we were, like, it's part of the template, it's in the summer that we're going to go over and, and at that point we could.
Okay.
We could bring that to a vote.
And then also the, about the AED machines in the schools and whether or not, you know, what, what's happening on that case now that our budget's approved. So I just think that it's important if, if, you know, if people, we, what, we've often talked about this, that if there are comments from citizens that we need to answer and understand how we're moving forward with, with sometimes, you know, their requests. Wasn't that in the board notes?
I believe that that information was done, completed, but I can go back and look.
But would the public know that? No. So whether we, we don't.
I think she was, I think we answered her specifically.
Hers.
Yes.
Yes, but the general public heard her question and then there's no response from the board. So I feel that someplace we should have a response, you know, we have response to comments from citizens, but that's only directly for when someone comes up. But when people have approached us about important issues to them, we should have a response that everyone can hear, I feel, not just the one person. So that's just a thought.
There is a, um, there's a couple of us who are going to be looking at the nine thousands, which is also the meeting template, and maybe we could talk about whether we add that to the agenda.
Or was it, would it fall under response to comments from citizens?
It could, right, but, but we then need to then denote that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Andrea, do you have?
I have two things.
Yes.
And the first thing is, I, I want everybody to know that when I do, I have two reasons for doing the, the corrections for commas and things like that. First of all, I do it for fun. And the second thing is, um, I, I want to make the difference between instructional grammar and rhetorical grammar. And there are two different functions and, uh, I'm hoping to pursue that as we go along during the year. So that's one thing. The second thing is, I couldn't have been more thrilled or more, uh, I don't know, just felt such a feeling of camaraderie is the word that comes to mind, but maybe it's more like grandmotherliness. But Karen Rockwell Cartier is teacher of the year. And I had Karen in eighth grade and I'm so proud of that.
So, I don't know, that's it. So, um, I've been talking, uh, or the template has been referred to quite a bit tonight. And I will, I think we've gotten, the most recent one has been sent out to everyone, but I'm asking for the people, for the chairs of policy, curriculum, finance and communications just to look at the referral sheet, just to make sure that the referrals that you have on there make a lot of sense to you all, um, just so that we can do that. And just, um, when Susan and I were meeting, we were looking, we were just, we, we've worked really hard this, this year. Um, and so, um, to kind of go back to a little bit more of a summer schedule where we would have, um, one committee of the whole with one board of, board of ed meeting. Um, and then also, um, in August, actually have one of the meetings for the committee of the whole be a retreat, like we would have it at the same time that we have committee of the whole, we would have it so that people, um, could be remote. And, uh, to finish up the work around our, our vision emission statement. Um, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that that will, might look a little bit different for us, uh, for the summer. Notice that we, we have not only was the cheat sheet of all the end of the, uh, school activities, but also the act, uh, the dates that are coming up in June. And, uh, graduation is when, Susan?
The sixteenth.
The sixteenth, okay.
It's a Friday.
And suggested agenda items, I have, Rita, I have for you to go to finance, um, the electric charging stations.
the electric charging stations, um, on school grounds. And then for Liz, I have the curriculum for four credits, uh, for social studies. As, are there any other agenda items?
I guess we'll be hopefully voting on the, uh, communication plan at our next meeting.
Okay, so just make sure that that, um, I, we get that, but absolutely.
Okay.
Super. I'm, I'm looking forward to looking at that.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we.
You have another agenda?
No, but information and proposals. I wanted to acknowledge the middle school concert. The orchestra choir, the drummers were really phenomenal. We enjoyed that very much. And I did have a request. In 2021, we got a form showing minority hiring across the district. And I had asked our former statistician, and I've asked our current statistician, if we could use the same template and have a year or two before COVID, 2019, 20, 2021, 21, 22, if that's available, so that we can fit a line and s- and measure our progress and set our goals. And I, I would really like to get that data set.
So is that a possibility that could get to the board?
Yeah, um, we do have the request. We're researching back. We, our system does not retain historical data, but we're trying to see what we have in the way of maybe archived reports that we can pull that data from.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lori. And we're still hiring, so this year, we, we wouldn't really have all that data till when the school year starts, so.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Good meeting, guys.